Shall we?
Alright, the question.
Good evening, everyone. Give a moment here for Ron to sit up. How you doing?
Good, thank you.
Let me know when you're ready to go. Alright, you're ready. Alright. Okay, welcome, everyone. This is the July twenty twenty five. Regular meeting of the Smithfield Township Planning Commission. Well, we have a few people out for various vacations. We do have a forum board. We've got an agenda here. To get through. So you have everybody that is present, right? Alright. First thing, let's take a look at. The minutes. Yeah, three cents of minutes needed review. We are going to start with the April twenty twenty five set of minutes. Can they take a look at that? I make a motion that we approve the minutes of April ten two thousand twenty five.
I second.
Seconded by James. Any discussion? Hey, all favor?
Aye.
Alrighty. Let's look at the May meeting minutes. I was looking at them earlier today. From my standpoint, they're okay. If we make the motion that we approve the minutes. Of May two thousand twenty five, can take a look.
I second.
Seconded by James. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And June, the June twelve two thousand twenty five minutes. Everybody would take a look, please. Yes, we'll talk about that. I'm making motion, we accept the conditions. Alright, motion to approve by James.
I'll second that.
Any comments? Any discussion?
Sure.
Alright, all favor?
Aye.
Okay, all minutes have been approved. Old business. We've yet again received a request for the Three Point Garden Major Subdivision table ending. So I'll make a motion that we table this to the. I guess August, what is it?
August fourteenth.
August fourteenth, that one is. To the August fourteen. Leaving. In seconds.
I'll say.
Seconded by Gene. Discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Alright, Julia will get something up. Do the, the, the.
Yes, if they do not send us an extension, they will be on board supervised beginning of the twenty second.
Okay. Sounds good. Did you hear that, Jim? Thank. Alright, next, under old business. Smithfield Sewer Authority Land Development Plan Deadline July twenty three two thousand twenty five. Step right up. Evening, Russ.
Okay, sit here and do whatever you want. Whatever makes it easier for you. I'm Russ Albert, Chairman of Smithfield Sewer Authority. I have two other board members, then Terry Canico and Marion Bridges are here, they're members of the board. And Beau Root from Hanover Engineering is going to present the project and answer any questions and find out. Whatever questions you might have, and then we'll try to get them resolved.
Oh, can you spell it wrong?
Yes, R O O T.
And before we get started, John, was there anything?
We got a, we got a second submission, but we have not had the opportunity to review that second submission yet.
Oh, so we don't have the second submission. I was looking for, is there some other letter missing?
No.
Okay, well, we have. We don't have.
They do have a lot of waiver requests here that could, in fact. Impact their design, so you may want to listen to those waiver requests and at least give. An indication as to what you're thinking about that.
Well, my business says we have a deadline. The light twenty three.
If they resubmitted, though, the ninety days will start again.
Oh, the resubmission reset, so this is wrong.
Assuming, I'm not sure when it was resubmitted. I think it was recently, but the ninety day reset.
Uh, yeah, it was recently submitted, but after discussion and discourse regarding Three Point Garden with them disagreeing that the resubmission date restarted the ninety days. Um, Ron, attorney Carisak and I spoke and said, hey, we're just going to C Y A every time to make sure that we get an extension. Um, so I, I've spoken with Terry there, absolutely amenable to sending us an extension and. Done, no problems, we're going to go.
Okay, just so I, just so I know, there's not something we're gonna miss tonight. Alright, go ahead.
Alright, well, let me get, I'm sorry, apologize. Just for the record, we did submit the drawing from documents and comments from initial questions on June twenty.
Okay.
A while ago.
Two weeks ago.
My receipt date is June fifteenth.
They were emailed June twenty.
Okay, we, we view submission dates based on one paper, not much.
As part of the record, they were emailed June twentieth to everybody.
Okay.
Alright, well. Hello, everyone. My name is Bella as mentioned. I'm here representing Smithfield Sewer Authority for the one fifteen Twin Falls Road, when you're finding land development plans. I believe most of you are familiar at this point, but I can, I'll give a brief rundown, just to be familiar as everybody is needed. Um. We are taking an existing property of one fifteen Twin Falls Road, just down the road here. Uh, we are redeveloping it, so we are proposing rehabilitation of an existing driveway. Proposal of ten parking spaces and.
There's his, it's fine.
It's the minimum. Associated lighting, and then we're utilizing an existing depression on property for stormwater management, but we're not proposing any grading for that stormwater basin. Um, as Jonathan mentioned, I have a waiver request letter. If you guys would like, I can go through those individually and we can discuss them, or if you had any individual questions specifically about those waivers, we could do it that way, whatever you guys prefer.
Looking for the waiver request letter.
I stated June nineteenth. It's, uh, it's kind of waiver request letters.
Never mind, Mr. Care, because I have one that came in earlier.
Okay. I believe we have twelve until.
Alright. Yeah, let's. Alright, so this is the house. I think that's right down literally around the corner from us here.
Yep, and it's being converted to the office for Smithfield Sewer Authority down the way here.
What do these waiver requests, do you think are the stickiest?
I don't know that. Any are unreasonable. Uh, there are some. They are asking for some request. Relief on what lane buffers, stream buffers. So you probably want to.
Yep.
Talk about those.
Sure.
Uh, I think you're asking for a request from not providing an emergency schoolway.
Correct, yep, I have justification for that as well.
That's what comes to mind of.
Okay. Here, why don't you go through them?
I think we gotta go through them.
Yep.
Let him go through them then. Okay, sure thing, one by one.
Yeah.
Alright, no problem. Alright, um. Everyone is ready, I'll go ahead. Uh, the first two are. I don't know if you want to read the whole section, but I will. Section two, two, twenty six, two, twenty three, one, J one, D two A of the water ordinance. Uh, goes hand in hand with the next one, which is section twenty six, two, twenty three, one, J one, D two B. And these are, I will read them directly. A modification is requested from the section of the water ordinance to allow for. The construction of parking driveway areas and building addition within the outer wetland buffer. For this section, driveways, parking areas and building additions are not permitted activities slash development within the outer wetland buffer. And the next one going hand in hand with this is a modification is requested from the section requiring a maximum of twenty percent disturbance. The outer wetland buffers in accordance with the water ordinance.
That's two tenths roughly, the two tenths of an acre there that you're.
Yes, correct. Of this area, total of one point one nine nine acres is proposed for disturbance or twenty three point seven percent of the outer wetland buffer. And then the justification for those two essentially goes hand in hand. Being that a majority of the proposed development that is within the wetland buffer is within areas that are currently disturbed. And of those, it is primarily parking and driveway areas that are encompassing that wetland buffer disturbance. So the areas that we are proposing, with the exception of a small portion of the building addition, which is within that, that outer wetland buffer. Uh, is essentially. Uh, it's actually, I haven't here exactly. Of the point two one one acres of proposed outer wetland buffer disturbance, approximately point two oh two, I know these are. Excessive, but point two oh two acres is proposed within previously developed or disturbed areas. So that's less than a tenth of an acre that is newly disturbed areas within those.
It's adjacent to the. I, what, what's that, what are you, we got a lot of jarring. What are you, is it attaching to the existing driveway, the disper, what is?
So the outer wetland buffer is a one hundred foot offset off of the wetland downslope. Um, we are, let me see if I can show you, it might be easier to see. Alright, I don't know if everyone can see, it might be a little difficult to see. I have two small lines running through, essentially, uh, the bottom.
Just fucked it up on this side of the room.
Yes, I guess.
No, you're fine.
Move on over if you want. Okay, so, um, going hand in hand with straight buffers, I'll put down here, that's another one I'll be discussing. Um, the area just. Underneath the building here, there's a small existing driveway access. Down here.
That's what I mean. Are you just expanding on? What is already there?
Exactly, yes, with the exception of that point zero zero nine acres.
That's the expansion.
Yes, well, that's the area that is not currently disturbed that we are proposing to disturb within the buffer. The area that is already disturbed within the buffer that we're.
What I'm asking is, is it attached to what is all, the driveway that's already there?
Yes.
That's what I mean, okay.
Sorry.
Now, we're good.
Yeah, I got it.
Yep. Alright.
So, um, then going hand in hand with that, as I mentioned, with the other waiver requests, um. The twenty three point seven percent of the outer wetland buffer disturbance, twenty percent is allowed, and we are seeking relief for that, given that we're disturbing three point seven percent. More of the total weather buffer than is permitted, for the same reason that I discussed.
You said. This evening, you're, you're proposing ten parking spaces?
Correct.
I thought fourteen, was I mistaken on that?
Oh, I apologize, sorry, fourteen total.
Yes, a ten parking space, um. Area over here with the addition of the four on.
And aren't, and aren't. Three or eight parking spaces within the wetland buffer?
Yes.
And aren't only eleven parking spaces required by ordinance?
Um, that is a good question. I'm not sure about that.
I, I believe John is correct, that's eleven, based on this first one he's lived in the building.
So why are you.
Yeah.
Building another three additional parking spaces than what the ordinance requires and, and putting them in the buffer?
Yeah, I don't have the answer to that. Was that initially a, a request on your, you mentioned to have them parking over there?
Well, we felt we wanted employees parking on the west side of the building. And the ten spaces was for visitors, uh, and we didn't really anticipate more than ten visitors to a meeting for the sewer authority at any one time. Uh, we'd be happy to reduce it to eleven. No problem with that, you know, but then you wouldn't even need a waiver, and it wouldn't even be in the buffer, right?
It's a waiver, but it wouldn't be as. Wouldn't be as severe.
Right.
You know, or. Make the one parking area eight. Uh, and three on the other side. Uh, we just felt ten was a reasonable number. Obviously, when you. Start getting into the impact in the buffer zone, understand this property is existing, the house location is existing. We tried to minimize earth disturbance on where we were going to put the parking. Uh, we were in front of the zoning hearing board and did get some, uh, waivers from the zoning hearing board on, uh, some item, I think, steep slope. Again, we're trying to minimize any additional impact to the existing, uh, steep slope or outer buffer. Uh, of the wetland area. And again, uh, it's short of moving the parking lot away from the building. Uh, farther away from the building, which makes the public have to walk farther to get into the building, which we didn't think made sense. That's why we selected the location. Uh, if the commission would prefer to have less parking. Uh, we're okay with that. Uh, it's already understood if we had a very large meeting.
I was just gonna ask.
It's going to be in, in the township meeting, right?
Yeah, you'd, you'd get a different venue.
Correct.
Truly, yeah, that's right. Okay.
Yeah, the, uh, the primary area that John, I think, is referring to, where the two parking spaces are, that's an area that, an existing, uh, parking slash gravel area at that point, so we had. Place that just to adhere to what was there and utilize the existing area, but. Understood, if, if you guys prefer, we can definitely reduce that parking.
Let me ask this. If, 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 you know, I'm gonna ask this to the, uh. The manager, they're saying they want to modify their, they reported it, the water ordinance to modify them. Not, it's not the subdivision ordinance they're talking about, they're talking about the water ordinance.
I do not know the answer to that question off the top of my head. I would need to look into it, um, and I'm going to take your time, I need you to apologize. The waiver letter, uh, is not in your package this evening, so Terry very kindly went and grabbed the loads I printed.
Yes, I got one.
Yeah, I got one. You do? I'm losing my mind. Never mind. Thank you, everyone. I guess I just missed the one that I was double checking on. My apologies.
And we're generally being that, that less parking is better, you know, than any more. You know, from, you know, from our standpoint. Um. Certainly, in retail uses, that's not what this is. Um. But I mean, if you don't buy it, reducing it to where you don't need the waiver anymore, I think that's, that's really the way you should go.
That's what the question was, fair enough.
That, that's what I would think is the way it should go. What are you ready for?
I think that you don't build your parking lot for Christmas.
Yes. You need five hundred year parking event?
Right.
That's what I'd say.
Understood.
Yeah. Understood you have access to this building, and for some reason, there's something larger.
Right.
It's, it's a much easier thing to do.
I guess, no worries.
Yeah.
Oh, I guess that nullifies the next waiver request, which was pertaining to the water ordinance, um, for the same reason for outer stream buffers. Which primarily would have been impacted by that area that we're discussing, so I suppose that we'll, um. Relay out our parking and then we'll see if we're.
Yeah, relay.
Parkly, yeah, okay. Alright, on to, this is on the second page, it's section twenty two dash one zero one one point one. This modification is requested from this section of the Salvo. To waive the requirement for driveways to intersect at ninety degrees from existing rights of way for a minimum of twenty feet. On this one, it's a lot of numbers, so I will go ahead and just read our justification directly for you. Uh, the proposed site entrance off of Twin Falls Road is aligned to adhere to the alignment of the existing site driveway. This line is designed to be a ninety degree angle for thirty feet from the center line. Or twenty two feet from the edge of the existing pavement. Due to the Pendock condemnation. Twenty feet beyond the right of way line is about fifty five feet from this existing center line of the road. Which is eighteen point five feet further than it would have been had Pendot knocked into the area. Uh, for those who can see, this is, uh, our existing driveway that we are redefibrating, uh, and paving. Uh, and the reason for that bend is to adhere to the existing alignment of that driveway. So we are seeking relief. From the requirement to have a minimum of twenty feet from the right of way due to the condemnation of Pendot that has pushed that right away further back.
And the condemnation is because at some point there may be four lane road coming, is that? Why?
My understanding is that it was going to be a potential realignment of Twin Falls Road. And that was condemned by Pendot for the purpose of relining that intersection to be a ninety degree intersection, Seven Bridge.
That wasn't, that wasn't part of the bypass condemnation?
I'm not familiar, to be honest with you.
It was part of the original bypass condemnation, the twenty years ago?
Yeah, I know, because I did like fifteen of them for the, for the court when they did them, when they were playing over the money back in the day.
Both said the original intent was to bring Twin Falls Road out from ninety degree intersection with Seven Bridge Road. If the township wants to do it, if the land is available for them to do it in the future, but it was not part of the, uh, bypass project as it ended up.
As it ended up, right, there were a couple pieces they gave back, you know.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right, and it is difficult to see here as, because of my, my layout of the plans, but the edge of the road, existing road here is going up off the page. And you can see this is our right of way, our, our property line due to the condemnation area, so there is. A pretty substantial area that was condemned for the purposes of that potential reline.
Right.
That, and pull this back here.
If you drive by the property, half of the green that you see in the front yard is the condemnation.
It's really, okay, alright.
John, I checked, chapter twenty six, um, any person may apply to the supervisors who will attach up the Smithfield for an exemption to terms of this part. So it would be third word supervisors.
So really, you're just proposing to use the driveway that is there now?
Exactly. Instead of requiring an additional extension that's perpendicular off of the right of way here, and then realigning that to essentially require additional earthwork. That we feel can be avoided in this case.
Okay. I have a question. How, how many people coming in and out of there on a day? I don't know how many people work for this sort at the, how many people are going to work at the building?
Uh, two full time employees, two part time.
Alright, so the reality is it's. Very lightly used, very lightly used, on a very lightly used road.
Correct.
Okay.
And it's an existing.
And it's an existing driveway, you're correct.
That's gonna be. Good. Yeah. Uh, the next one is, um, just below it, it's, it goes over to page three, but on page two, it is section twenty two, ten fourteen, one A. Uh, this is a modification that's rejected from the sections to waive the requirement to install curving surround with both parking and driveway areas for the Salvo. Um, so the reason we did not propose curving initially, this property sits up on a, a relative high point in it, in its configuration. And the stormwater runoff is essentially going either to the front of the property or the back, and it's kind of naturally sheet flowing that way. So we have. For those who are familiar with the project that we're doing, we have, there's like a little depression in the front area kind of by that condemnation up here. That we are utilizing for a stormwater basin with no grading. We have demonstrated that it has the capacity to handle all the water, and that's where water naturally flows off the front. And then as well, off the back to Marshall's Creek. So we felt that if we were to propose curving in this case, that would require the installation of storm sewer and concentrated points of discharge. That would be a little bit more intrusive to the property and the development as a whole. Versus maintaining the characteristics that we have on the site by allowing that sheet flow to continue. As it currently stands. So that's the reason we're requesting relief for this one.
What are your thoughts on that, John?
I, I don't have any objections to that.
Yeah, it doesn't sound. You don't want to put any, what you're telling is basically you don't want to put. You don't want to put in any jack games.
Yeah, it's, we just feel that like if you have, like a pipe or something, we have to dissipate that energy and we have concentrated points of discharge to the road, and. We just felt that we, because of the layout of the site, it was pretty easy for us to maintain that, that character, and we felt that it was best to, to leave that as untouched as possible, given the nature of the site.
Okay.
Understandable. Again, part of my consideration is, you know, it's very likely amused by traffic.
Yeah, you do. Yeah. That's understandable.
Right.
Alright, is it? Is, you guys have the property already, right?
Correct, it is owned by the sewer authority.
How did? That's, we had, we had twelve inches of rain in May, how did it look?
I didn't notice any problem.
You didn't notice any problem? Okay.
Right.
The water. Nice, nice calculation, let's get to the practice. We had twelve inches of rain, what did it look like?
I will say, I am getting to it, but we did do infiltration testing towards where you're in that area to show that it actually does de-water. It's a critical part of our design to show that it's not just gonna sit there, like the water actually does drop.
It'll trickle down.
Exactly.
It's gotta get over to the Marshall's Creek side.
Yeah, for what it's worth, that, that was an element of our design as well.
And the property naturally slopes.
Naturally, okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, the next one is on page three, is section twenty two, ten fifteen, one. Uh, this is a modification that we're requesting to waive the requirement to install sidewalks along the streets bordering the subject property. Uh, the first reason for that is that there are no nearby public transportation stops or pedestrian crossings that would otherwise benefit from the installation of this sidewalk. As well, something that's a little bit more logistical would be that the location of the sidewalk specifically along Twin Falls Road currently would be a little bit hard to identify at this stage due to. First of all, the condemnation area and the uncertainty surrounding that with the realignment potentially of the road. Where to place that sidewalk, if we were to put it along our, our right of way currently, if. No improvements were to be done, the existing Twin Falls Road wouldn't be adequate to service by a sidewalk. Whereas if we were to put it up by the existing Twin Falls Road in that area where then needed, uh, the sidewalk would need to be ripped up. Um, additionally, for Seven Bridge Road over here for that frontage. Uh, you may be able to see here, we have a wooded area that will, it isolates the property as well as presents some challenges without clearing for installing sidewalk on that side. So because of those reasons, we are requesting relief from that section. To install sidewalk.
What? Our general rule thumb. Because we get that request. Pretty much with everything that comes in front of us.
I'm true.
Is. Understanding the nature of what we have there, your property. It's, uh, it's a lot easier to make that request to us if you, um. Basically make provision for the easement in case sidewalks wish to be. Installed in the future.
Right, okay.
And those, that way you can have some, some recorded maps with some recorded lines.
Accessory and access easement essentially.
Yeah, it is, yeah, what you, you know, if we had to put them in, you know, this would be, this is where they would go. Kind of stuff.
Okay.
And that way it is in place. In, you know, in case after we're all long gone. The township does change in character and wishes to.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And wishes to have people or, or undertake a project to install. Sidels, I could actually see it in this one along that, along that road down towards the park eventually, things. If, if. Development change on the other side, that, that's one I could actually see.
On this portion?
Yeah, something, you know, I could actually see it, so as long as there, there's provision. Made for, I think that is. The way I would go.
Would you prefer that that easement was provided along the existing right of way inside of our property away from the condemnation area for the potential? Of the realignment of Twin Falls Road, because if that were never realigned. Uh, essentially, that sidewalk would need to either fall into condemnation area or that isn't be in an incorrect location. If that makes sense. Because that isn't a location would then.
Well, it's already condemned.
Right.
So, so the Commonwealth would have to release it back.
Yeah, which is unlikely.
You know, which. No, but it has happened.
Yeah.
You know, when the projects change, but. You know, that's usually low on their, you, low on their agenda items. I would say put along the part that you have to control.
Okay, so the frontage on both.
Yeah, I would say put along the parts that you have control over.
What is the normal width for that part of?
What, what do we, what do we generally do, like four, four feet?
Well, that's, that's the size of the size.
Sidewalk.
Yeah, like constructed, I'd, I'd do a ten, ten foot wide easement.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, that, that could, personally, I could see a walking trail.
Yeah, right, you can see it, right? Yeah, right.
I, I know, I think back, and Grace and Griffin was the supervisor, I think she was trying to do a walking trail from this park up to the village of Marshall's Creek, so. You know, I, I agree, I have no problem showing that easement.
Beautiful.
Lot of other pieces have to fall in place, but.
Yeah, but that, but you, but you could see that, even if Christine would get lost.
Giddy, just kidding, it's giddy.
What's, uh, what's the cost of putting a sidewalk in?
I, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head. I know it's, it's relatively substantial. I can't speak to the impact that it would have on my client.
The, again, from our viewpoint, where's it going? It's going to township property that doesn't have a sidewalk. It's going to a park which more likely would have a walking trail. Uh, coming off of the park.
Uh, can you put, can you put a trail there? Make that a trail instead of, uh.
Along the frontage?
Yes.
Well, that's why we would be providing the easement.
You know, I. It's sandwich a walking path there to begin with. If that's possible.
I, I'm hesitant to establish a walking path that doesn't go anywhere.
Well, in a big. Well, it, because we, if, if there is a proposal to, to do, uh. Walking bike path for the township, and that may play into it, so.
Well, I can say for sure that if we do establish that easement, that future would always be possible because we would have the provisions in place for that access. And the, the future used.
And I think I would speak for a whole board that if, if the property on, on each side. Wanted to have a walking trail on Twin Falls Road. Going to someplace, we would be receptive to, to working with whoever creates that walking path, well. Creating the easement, a ten foot wide easement at this point makes sense.
The great and powerful search engine states that installing a sidewalk can cost anywhere from six to twenty five dollars per foot. Per linear foot or square? Per square foot, okay.
Per square foot.
It was, that was a fast Google search, so don't trust it, but.
Well, that's a pretty big range.
That is a big range.
Yeah, it, I don't have an exact number, but we're somewhere around. Six, seven hundred feet probably of frontage, if you can consider the entirety of those street frontages. That's a hard estimate, so.
Sorry, so we'll create a ten foot permanent easement. Yeah, along, along the condemnation line.
And the frontage is seven.
Yeah, you may as well put it down there too for whatever, but then likely not gonna be much, it's gonna go along the tour line.
Okay, yeah, if you want us to, we can put it there as well.
Yeah, do on both, I would say, I would say make the provision for both. That's out by the water.
The, 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 the condemnation line parallel to Seven Bridge Road right now. Uh, from that line down to the road, it's probably twenty five, thirty feet at like almost a seventy, eighty degree angle. So I don't know where the sidewalk could come go.
And I'd say just put it in there anyway in case somebody wants to do it.
Yeah, we do have, uh, ten feet on the dot to the, uh, parking, parking over there, exactly, you know.
Fine, we'll show it.
Yeah, that's plenty of space.
Alright, um, and now on to, on page three, section twenty two, eleven oh one, C two D. And that is a modification requested to waive the requirement to plant street trees. Between one and ten feet from the ultimate right of way, Twin Falls Road and Seven Bridges Road. Before I elaborate further, I do wanna clarify that we would still be planting these trees. We are requesting a waiver from the location of the trees, being between one and ten feet from the ultimate right of way.
Which is the easement you just asked us to create.
Right, um, the reason for that, kind of paralleling the other discussions I've had with the con- condemnation area. Uh, if we were to be within the ultimate right of way along the frontage here, for example. Being between one and ten feet with the existing Twin Falls Road alignment, uh, doesn't really. In my opinion, doesn't maintain the character of the linear nature of the street trees. And they essentially would be a line of trees that are in the center of the grass area within this frontage of the property. Because of that, we are proposing that we still plant these trees. But we plant them within the front yard in a more configured fashion to look a little bit more aesthetic and not to have as linear of a orientation. On that frontage because of the nature of the condemnation area and its separation to the.
Basically, we would have a line of trees and a curve in the middle of our front yard.
With this weird line of trees.
Exactly, and then if, if you think about it, you'd have like twenty feet from the road.
We're willing to plant the quantity of trees, we just wanna be a little.
And then in that same vein for Seven Bridges Road, uh, there is this existing tree line here, which would make it difficult to plant trees, obviously, within that. Uh, or not difficult, but a little bit counterintuitive in my opinion to plant them in a linear fashion when there's a tree line directly in front of them. So for that frontage as well, we would be proposing to plant them still within the front yard as we would be doing for Twin Falls Road. But planting them in a more, um, varied fashion, okay, that, that line. Uh, with the existing shrubbery and trees in this area, and I actually have the landscaping plant somewhere, should I get that? So this is kind of what I've been thinking, if you can see here, the, the letters represent trees. Uh, and instead of doing within ten feet, that's a pretty small area here, we would be pretty tight on a line here. Where the road, it's difficult to see is coming all the way up here. And then same over here, we would be planting everything in a more, uh, aesthetic value. Still planting the required trees.
Esthetic is good. Yeah, that makes sense.
Alright, uh, next one is just below on page three, section twenty two, eleven oh one, E two. This is a modification that we're requesting to waive the requirement for continuous low hedge buffer for non-residential parking areas within a hundred feet of a public street. So this one, uh, pretty cut and dry, I actually have pictures to show it, there is an existing continuous edge. Along the frontage here that encompasses the, goes through the entire parking area as well as near to the top of the property. Um, if you guys wanna see, I have pictures that you can perhaps see it. Yeah, it's a hedge road that.
You're keeping the existing hedge.
Yes, exactly, if you wanna see.
Aren't you proposing some mountain more?
Uh, we are, there's a small area of screening that we're proposing separate to that requirement that is. Directly in front of the, uh, the five parking spaces there.
You know what kind of, what type of hedge those are?
Uh, that was mountain moral in that area, yes. I will leave that as zoning requirement, but I do not remember.
You only have to buffer the parking area. You are buffering it, so I'm not sure why you need the waiver.
I think it says it has to be along the whole street frontage. Maybe I'm wrong on that.
Yeah, I would have to look back at the actual section because our modification doesn't specifically reference that.
Let's see if we can see if. If it's only the parking area between the existing hedge and the proposed hedge.
Yeah, it says for a continuous low hedge buffer for non-residential parking areas. With, that are located within one hundred feet of a road, so if you're going to be. Buffering the parking area, then I don't think you need the waiver.
Okay, yeah, I guess we'll look back and see exactly what the language is in there, and if it doesn't, uh, apply to what we're proposing, then we'll just immediately request.
We have mountain laurel down this one?
I think so, yeah.
I generally don't notice it until you get.
There's some over west, like, uh.
You generally don't notice it till you get up four oh two near Sun Creek. And you start heading up into the, uh. Of, uh, when, when you're going up one ninety one and nine forty. Mountain Laurel habitat.
If there's another hedge that's, if it's required, if there's another plant that.
I would say that, I, I would just hate to see a plant mountain laurel and then it not thrive there.
Yeah, we did actually look and made an effort to choose something that we felt. That would live and then maintain the character, it actually was.
No, I, I'm with you.
I get it though, I'm sure that happens also, like, no, first of all, we live, good.
No, no, I'm, but I'm with you, I understand.
We don't think the deer eat it either, if you drive by the herd of deer over there right now.
Especially at the road of Denver.
I'll go on that one. Alright, the next one goes over to sheet four, but on sheet three, the adjustment, uh, modification is section twenty two, thirteen oh two, three H. And that is a modification we're requesting to waive the requirement of a minimum two percent swells to load. So we have a swell proposed, uh, for those who are not familiar, it's right over here, if you can see it. Um, we propose this swell, it's the outlet for the spill over from the basin that we're proposing this site. Is in a noted pension zone of the I- one sixty seven ordinance. Which essentially means that we're trying to maintain the runoff of the site to the greatest extent practicable and send that water out, so. We've actually demonstrated that we can infiltrate the entirety of the, the largest storm event of runoff here. But we've chosen to allow this water to outflow and convey safely to Marshals Creek to maintain that, that outflow from the site and allow it to leave. So, to get back on track, uh, the relief is requested. Uh, in an effort to maintain the topography of the site, because we are trying to do a minimal amount of grading to kind of maintain the general slope in this area. Uh, so that we're not doing excessive amount of earthwork. And in addition to that, the current swell is between one and a half and one point nine percent, so it's very raised to that two percent, it's just not quite there. So, we felt that if we were gonna make that swell a little bit steeper, it would be a marginal amount, but still some more earthwork, and then that would be. Additional earth disturbance that we don't necessarily need to do. Additionally, worth noting that we have designed this way to convey the larger storm event, which is exceeding the required, uh, demonstration of, of conveyance for the storm events. Um, so we, we have done that and we've added it accordingly, and we've shown, uh, a cross section in our report that it is conveying that water safely.
Is there any evidence of any erosion on that property now?
No, but you can go over, as you just said, there were ten, twelve inches of rain and. We had replanted some of the grass, uh, a month or so ago. And that was right before the rainstorm and nothing washed away.
Yeah, and there is.
It may be a little nervous, you know, that we had done it and we had a big storm, but. It, you can look at it and it doesn't look like anything had washed away.
And there is, uh, as you get further down the property, there's an existing swell, it's a little, it's not extremely defined, but it is present. And we're actually discharging directly to that in order to kind of keep that channelized flow into existing conveyance for us to get to Marshals.
Into an existing flow.
Essentially, yes. It's not a, a, an established channel, but there's an evidence of a, a little bit of channelization there that we're trying to kind of adhere to.
We, we talked about something like that once, like, wasn't it a? A, a, a new Shawnee, was that a Shawnee?
I don't know, I mean, I, I personally don't have a problem with this.
Right, it was like, but it was similar, it was like a wonder a two percent grade to. Basically slope some water over grass into, into an existing. One, I, I don't think there's ever been, yes, it was on top. They were doing like their laundry facilities or something up there.
You're going way back.
I am going way back. An elephant never forgets, I'm looking at myself in the picture. So, um, yeah, but I, but I think I, I don't think we've, we've had an issue with that at all.
Not in this location. And they do have infiltration anyway, so.
Okay, that makes sense.
Alright, uh, on to page four, uh, the next one is section twenty two, thirteen oh two, four A. Uh, this is a modification that we're requesting to allow for a two to one slope or a border of, sorry, boulder wall. Uh, in, in between the driveway and parking and existing garage right in this area here. So the maintenance of the vegetation on the two to one slope is not an issue if we were to propose the border wall, so I have on the grading and utility, but I actually show a border wall, I believe this is something that you did perfectly sell.
A little bit, uh, again, we're trying to keep natural features. As much as possible and using, I'm sure you've all seen some boulders, you know, retaining walls and. Uh, very minimal, if you, if you go by the property and you look in the driveway, you'll see the garage, you'll see the house and there's a slope between them. Wherever we exceed the, the slope, we wanna, you know. Uh, reduce the slope by putting some large boulder to, uh, stop the runoff and help it easier to maintain the slope.
Right, and, uh, for what it's worth, we do have it working at a two to one slope in the, in this area, it's a, a linear footage of thirty five feet. That would be required as two to one, the remainder of our site is three to one. But in an effort to be as conservative as possible, we've designed like the erosion control madding for the slopes. To be, uh, able to be handled at two to one slopes for the entirety of the site, just to be extra safe. But if you guys would prefer something like a border wall in place of the two to one, that is something that we would also be asking relief for, should we take that route from the safe section?
What are your thoughts on that, John, I think?
I'm okay with it, we're not talking both.
We're not talking about a big piece. Yeah, it's half far?
Uh, let me actually get to roughly.
How much drop?
It's about a three foot drop. Yeah, it's not, like I said, it's thirty five feet in total length and it's, it's right off the existing parking area. And then we're going down to an existing, uh, garage area. So if we could do the two to one slope and not do the wall, and then like I said, we have everything designed accordingly for that. But this relief would be requested for either of those options. If you guys have a preference, we could establish that, or we could open that up to preference for the client.
If you go with the two to one slope, how are you going to, what are you gonna put on it, now you're gonna maintain?
I don't have the erosion control madding designed with me, I believe it was S one fifty. I'm not a hundred percent, but we did design it through North American Green to handle the two to one slope, given the, the.
And what kind of ground cover would you put on it, would it be a ground cover?
We would vegetate it.
Yes, with what?
Was that?
With what?
No, it would be just a grass, a, a traditional grass mixture, as far as I know, I'm not sure exactly what you're, you're asking, it wouldn't be like a metal mixture.
I'm, I'm just thinking about maintenance, so.
And so are we, we wanna make it as easy to maintain, you know, as possible.
But it's, you have to maintain it, we don't, so.
Yeah, so, we'll leave that up until your preference.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, yeah, I, I would say that would be the big problem.
We just think a short boulder retaining wall would just begin with the natural features that are on the property.
You know, this is gonna kill the maintenance issues, so.
Stacks are good.
Alright, uh, if we're good with that, the next one is in the water ordinance as well, this is section twenty six, two twenty five, one A, three A. And this is a modification that we're requesting to waive the requirement of a minimum twenty four inch limiting zone for infiltration BMPs.
Alright, so it's a lot of drawing, what was that mean?
Yeah, so basically, when you have an infiltrating BMP, the limiting zone is, you have to demonstrate that there is a ma- a minimum of two feet of. Infiltration area, subsurface below that infiltrating BMP. To allow for that water to appropriately infiltrate into the ground and, and enter the, the groundwater or into the, the soil. So the reason that we're requesting relief for this, obviously we agree with this in principle. The BMP that we're proposing is an infiltration basin that we're using the existing topography for. And in using the existing topography, we've taken, we've got an infiltration testicle in the area. But in order to identify the limiting zone, that would require earth disturbance and excavation within that area. Getting down to the required two feet in several locations to certify that there is a li- a twenty four inch. Separation to any limiting zone, which is like that rock water table thing. So.
Where you hit the actual water table.
Yes, so because that we've demonstrated that infiltration is occurring in, within this area and that it is de-watering water naturally. We feel that going in to create additional earthwork and to excavate holes essentially on the property would be excessive, given the. The demonstration of infiltration that we've already provided.
How much soil do we have there? How far is it before you embed rock?
That's a great question. Soil is pretty good from the infiltration.
Yeah, that probably was pretty good, right, this was all farm here. So you probably do have some.
It was all just, you know, at some point disturbed farmland.
The rest of us have rock, yeah, actually, so. Alright, that's understandable. It's already infiltrated.
Exactly.
And again, the storm. The water dissipated, uh, without a drain pipe out of it.
Um, on to another water warning section, this is the one that John had mentioned earlier, uh, this is section twenty six, two twenty eight, three. This is a modification that we're requesting to waive the requirement for an emergency spillway for the proposed infiltration basin. Uh, and to allow for nine inches of freeboard opposed to the required twelve inches of freeboard. Uh, for the routed one hundred year water surface elevation at the top of the basin, so. For those who are not familiar, freeboard is the separation of the water surface from the top of the, the basin. So we have nine inches, and I, I'll actually read this one because it's a little bit on the technical side. Uh, so routing demonstration is provided in our PCSM report. Which is a routing stormwater into the basin, and it's showing the rounded storm events through the basin with all of our outlet structure disabled. In the event of complete failure at the outlet structure. And in doing so, we're showing that the routed one hundred year storm event, which is essentially the maximum that we analyze. Uh, is reaching elevation, doesn't mean anything right now, but four eighty, four sixty eight point one four. Which allows for nine inches of freeboard to the top of the basin, given the failure of the outlet control structure. With the infiltration still happening within the, the depressed area. So, we feel that if we were to provide an emergency spillway. It would require first of all, some additional earthwork, but also it would be changing the. Regime, I guess, of the runoff on the property, because we would be, if that spillway were to act, then we would be sending water out into the depressed area. When currently it's all collecting there and infiltrating anyway, and we've demonstrated that. That water is still maintained within that depressed area, given failure of the outlet structure that we're proposing. Still with a substantial amount of freeboard, but we're not, it, it's three inches less than what is required for the section. I know that was a lot.
Okay.
If anyone has any questions, please ask, and I was.
I don't really understand, how fast is it, how, if it fills up, how fast does it drain?
Uh, I have de-watering calculations.
No, but that's really what you're talking about, I don't need those calculations.
Yeah, so I don't know the exact number, but I do know that when you're factoring in the amount, the drawdown of the water during the failure of the basin. Even at that extreme storm event, all of it's getting into the ground before it's over topping with.
Yeah, it's actually good, there, believe, that's what's happening now.
Exactly, that's, in so many words, that's what I'm saying.
In so many words, that's what's happening, that's what's happening.
We are sending a little bit more water to it because of the addition of the impervious coverage and things of that nature, so we wanted to demonstrate that. Given that those changes, we're still, uh, maintaining that infiltration in the event of failures, without.
So they're talking about in the event of failing, because you know, it, that's okay, four hundred and sixty eight feet. So they're talking about in the event of failing, because you know, that's okay, four hundred and sixty-eight feet elevation.
I know, I didn't.
That, well, Delaware is what, about four fifty-ish, give or take?
Yeah, and I think.
Is the, is the water surface something like that?
I think our bottom's four sixty-seven.
Yeah, it's something like, okay, so, so we have, so let's say it does, let's say we do have something truly catastrophic. Where would the water go now?
If the control.
With, with nothing. No, with no control structures. Where would it go, where would it go now? Where it's already going?
I know, I, I would have to look at the topography more specifically. I believe what would be happening is it would spill out on this side and over the river.
Yes, and go to Marshall's Creek.
And go toward Marshall's Creek. Anyway, even if we had some truly catastrophic.
Went into Seven Bridge Road two oh nine down toward the roundabout. It's that. That road is actually downhill to Marshall's Creek.
Yeah, right, so the reality is, it's going to go there.
Yes.
Or it's going to go there, or it's going to.
I do want to be clear that the failure of the salary control structure would require an extreme amount of neglect. And we have operation and maintenance in place and agreements that will be in place for stormwater management that are all providing that it gets cleaned up, which I understand. That is subjective if it's done or not, but in theory, this should be maintained and that, or it should be open at all times.
Right, it shouldn't even be all that hard to maintain if it's there.
Well, and it, we're really basically talking mostly like under the driveway, the jack to go in and out every day.
Yeah, right. Right, that makes sense. I'm sorry. Have words?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not, again, because of the location, because of the way things are existing. Uh, if they were constructing new. I, I wouldn't. I probably won't be as amenable, but it's existing.
But it's there.
To be working, so don't fix what isn't broken.
Yeah. Understood, thank you for that.
Yep.
Okay. All right, uh.
That was it?
Thanks.
All I have for you.
All right.
As far as the waiver request go.
So. Ron, what do we do, what do we do from here? We have a resubmission, so there's going to have to be another look no matter what, right?
I think we're going to have to have another meet.
We're going to have to do.
We're going to need John's second review or.
The second review. So how do we do it so that we keep these waiver requests and those?
Well, if you want to make a recommendation or someone wants to make a recommendation.
I want to do it all at once.
Oh, then we can just.
No, no, we'll do it, we'll do it at the time. I just want to keep it so it's all together, so we don't have to go.
Okay.
We don't, we don't, you know, we can say, yeah, we already talked about all these waivers at the last meeting.
All right, then we should make it part of the minutes that they were discussed this evening, and they should be made part of the, uh, next, uh. Discussion or made part of the official action that will take in on the plan.
Hold it, Julia. If you don't mind, I'll give it to you with my, with my hand scribbles in the ones. That way. You always got Russ, it's okay.
Before you, uh, make a motion or something, um, the authority feel that we reasonably answered all the comments. In the submission, um, but we feel that the, our resubmissions. Uh, provided adequate time to have a review for this meeting. We were hoping to be on the supervisor's agenda at their next meeting. Because obviously, we would like to move forward, uh, with the project. We're getting closer to fall and. Once we get in the fall, you know, losing construction period, because we do have to publicly bid this, uh, this work. Um, I don't know the normal procedures, uh, you know, obviously, we intend to follow. You know, of all the comments, uh, uh, that are provided and, you know, address them. Uh, we were hoping that we wouldn't have had, if there weren't any new comments, we were hoping we would have had them tonight. And we would have addressed them, uh, so that we could move on to the supervisor's meeting. Again, I don't know what your normal procedures are in a situation like that, when you haven't received, uh, review comments.
Well, since we just thought, yeah, what do you want, well, I was going to say that, you know, Mr. Albert's reputation and. And character is, is, uh, they're flawless. However.
But we have obligations too.
We need to have our engineer look at this, because if not, the next person is going to say, well, you let them get approval without your engineer looking at it. I want to do the same thing. I understand it's a problem and it holds things up and it costs money, but. I, I would be reluctant to tell this board to, uh, say grant a conditional plan approval without the engineer looking at the new submission.
Well, I'm not inclined to recommend that either, for those, for mostly for those same ones. As much as I appreciate it, Russ, a little, little flick on you. But, uh, we'll, we should put it on for our, uh, for our August agenda, because you'll have it no matter. That'll be no problem. We're going to do it for the August, for the August one. That will actually probably be what preliminary and final. Development approval at the same time.
Yeah.
Plus the waiver requests, and then it can get on to whatever the next. Whatever the supervisors, whatever it is in August. Yeah, whatever it is for August, there you go. But I think it'll stop you, nothing, nothing will stop you from at least lining up your.
Yeah, your bid requirements and the rest of it, so that you.
Well, we don't know what to bid. You know, we, we can't draw up bid documents until we know for sure what we're building.
Well, it's going to be in August. Thanks.
I have two questions. On the, on your June twenty letter, there are two. Points that you say, uh, the sewer authority may be exempt from these requirements. It's number forty-four and number fifty-one. And so. I'm not sure what to do with those responses.
Forty-four, did you say?
Yeah, number forty-four on page thirteen.
I believe, I, I think the, the, it's relating to, uh. Uh, payment in lieu of dedication of space for, um, public use, if that, if that.
Right, right.
Reminologies.
Yeah.
Um, we are a public entity. Uh, we just talked about dedicating a space for a public trail. Uh, if that qualifies for that, uh, you know, then, you know, we've already committed to make that space available. Uh, for, uh, public space. Again, uh, the, our board would be receptive to. You know, a walkway, you know, something, uh, from waterfront park to somewhere. But the township also has to create that space along the township portion, which would involve room. We're receptive to helping create space, but, um, it's a relatively small parcel, uh. To, uh, to create feet, to build fees of some type in lieu of this, uh. It's the fees coming from the users of the sewer authority, which are our taxpayers and township. So how far do you go?
Right, right, I think.
I, I don't know if it's a legal question or an engineering question or a zoning question, as far as where the answer comes from of that.
There's always an issue as to whether a commercial development, let's say, this is a commercial development. Should be setting aside money for, for land or money. For re- recreation, et cetera. I mean, generally, you have a subdivision and you say you're going to set some money or some area aside, so. The people that subdivision can go to the park or enjoy the park or whatever. That, that theory really falls when you deal with a commercial entity.
Well, it's a public commercial entity.
Even more so.
Because we are already part of a, a public entity. We are a component of Smithfield Township. Uh, yes, we own the property under the name of Smithfield Sewer Authority, uh, but we're public. Uh, and we're willing to provide some access for something. Uh, I just don't think it's appropriate to charge the users of the sewer authority, it's because it wouldn't come out of their user fee. And we don't get tax dollars. Uh, you know, there's no tax for sewer. Uh, it comes out of the use, use fees of the people who use the sewer authority, who are paying access to the township.
I think, I think most of the time, they just, like whoever is presenting it just says, this is what we're going to do. And so if you're going to provide. People can walk on your property, then.
Well, within the easement they were proposing, we don't want them just walking all over the property, but, uh, I don't know, maybe. Because we front on Marshall's Creek. I don't know, maybe we create a little, uh, pocket park by the creek. But that's a whole separate discussion that we want to have with the Township's Park Commission or, uh, even maybe brought in watershed people. What do you think along the creek?
A quick point of order before that, um, Smithfield Township does have approximately two hundred and fifty feet. Of walkway along the southern end of Quinn Falls Road. There's a property between. Smithfield Township and where the sewer authority is, that we also need to have some sort of walking path. Uh, but we have started that, because the walking path goes up and then transfer garden.
But there are wetlands also, uh, between waterfront park and this property, so. Then, yeah, it's, but I think the, the township really regulate is probably wide enough to create a walking path along the paved route. Uh, so it's conceivable to create something and we're willing to, to make that space available along our front. You know, for, for trails.
Okay, okay. And then number fifty-one, is that the same sort of thing?
Well, my understanding of that comment is, uh, we could provide financial security or we could build the intr- infrastructure that's being proposed. Our position is we're going to build it.
Ah, okay.
I don't think I'll.
The car is saccharic. The difference is however they build it, their own risk. Because the plan doesn't get filed, it doesn't get anything done. If they want to build first, instead of putting in the cost. Or the financial security to make sure that the improvements are in.
Ah.
So that's the ending of that yam.
There would be a point in time where the engineer, whoever for the township that reviews what actually constructed, would say, yes, it's constructed for the drawn. I think that's the way it's processed, which, uh.
That, that is correct, but again, your, your plan doesn't get filed, however, because you decided to construct. Rather than post the security. So once you've all constructed and once he's approved everything, then the plan will get filed. Won't get filed beforehand, because we have no protection against what is occurring if you haven't posted a bomb.
Right.
That's a good talk.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see in August. Anything else to say?
No, I, I am disappointed, uh, that we can't move forward, but I understand the western room.
Very. Yes. We're going to, you know, in the, well, nor is there a relation to that. Yeah. Just I understand. All right, next on the agenda, we have self-storage facility regulations. This is further in our packet. I think we talked about this already. We have. This is what comes back in order.
Yes, this is the official review. I will see that on your agenda, the board is discussing this and having some appearance. They're passing this on at twenty-six.
Yep.
Nothing's changed since you saw it last time.
It doesn't look like anything's changed.
Nope, not, not a single period, uh, funded his back in front of the planning commission unofficially this time.
Well, open it up to the board. Are you, are you there yet? It's a very, very short forwarded issue and sometimes less is better, but if you look at page two. Bottom of page one where it's not permitted and page two where it is permitted and. What the requirements and prohibited uses are, you can get a quick, quick look at, at what's, what's at all here. This is not really that difficult.
No.
Not permitted anywhere, except as a conditional use of ED and a peremptible use of.
No human habitation, huh?
I, I didn't write this, so.
I know.
I'll have to pass it on to someone else, but, and then we have the general requirements and the prohibited uses.
Yeah, it's actually pretty straightforward for the review. Did you look at it? Do you have anything?
How about you, John? Here, from, you know, from here.
I, I, I saw that the.
Or, or, did you have any comments?
I don't think you did. I'm fine. No. This is just to make it a conditional use of, we've got some bacteria, which is more than we have now.
Right.
Well, I, uh. I, uh, will make a motion that we. Uh, recommend passage of the, uh, recommend passage of the ordinance by the supervisor, right? That sounds good, Ron?
Yeah.
That'll make, I will make that motion. Any seconds?
Second.
Any discussion? No?
Very forward.
Seems pretty straightforward. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we move on. Excellent. Move business. All right.
All right, what have we got here now?
We have Otika Minor subdivision, somewhere here. Let's start there. We come back with a review on this thing. Yes. What do we have, Ryan?
I am in receipt of, uh, John's review letter and. And. I have made revisions to the.
So the, you're, you're responding to the, yeah, did you twenty-five one here?
Yeah, yep, thank you. And, uh, the, the comments were pretty much minor, uh, is what I thought. Um, do you want to go through them one by one or? What's your, what's your preference? The plans you have are not the revised plans. To be fair, there's not a whole lot different. And I could point out we're on the plans that you do have, unless you want to bring out the drawings.
Well, are you going to have to review them? Are you going to have to revise them no matter what? You would have to give us some plans, right?
He, yeah, I think you emailed them.
Yeah, yeah, I emailed today. I didn't expect you to, to review them. I just, I just looked at them.
Is your. Do you, uh, let's, I think we ought to do this the other way. Do you have any problems with any comments in my review letter?
No.
That I just think we got to review the plan and we're not ready to make a recommendation tonight, but I think you're okay.
But, but I do have, I was asking for two waivers.
Okay, I think they should be discussed.
Let's discuss those then.
Okay, the two waivers are, uh. Section eight oh three point one point R, the title report. Um. I, 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 uh, I went back, firstly, went back to nineteen forty-eight, the last set of books. And there are no easements other than what's on the, uh, reference sheet. I think there's six or seven, and, uh.
Those words have owned it for a long time.
What's that?
They've owned it for a long time.
Or, only two people have owned it, or two families, I should say.
Two families.
Have owned that property for a long time. Uh, two of the easements, was that, I think that was one of his questions, two of the easements are for pieces. On the other side of, uh. Look at the plan.
Yeah.
You're up here somewhere.
I'm up here.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, one of the easements is for, oh, right here.
Oh, this thing.
Yeah, uh.
At the end of Gabriel Drive somewhere.
Yep, at the very, very end. It's not even for the pole, for the guy wire. Because the pole, the pole's at, the pole's actually on the other property.
And the guy wire is out.
Yeah. Um. That's the only thing that, that, that's the only, uh.
What's the one that says waiver number ten, that's the best. Waiver has been requested and it doesn't seem what it is, where it number ten.
Oh, the existing wells and on that sewer systems on the adjacent problem. We're only cutting off one line. And I would have to locate fourteen wells and fourteen septic systems. That's cost more than doing the entire survey. Because you can't, you, plus I'd have to notify all those people as to where they are, you know, where is some of that? Um. That property's big enough that we can, there, he's not going to build anything. If he does build something, he's not going to build anything anywhere near. The outcomes of the property. So I don't, I don't see what you're going to gain by that, before what I'm saying.
This is just a transfer property, correct, Ron?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
My client, um, this.
Right.
And he wants to.
And he's buying the back property. He's buying all the back that's behind, but the house piece is this and he's buying this.
Yeah, basically. And he doesn't really know what he wants to do to this guy. But he figured he'd get, where the getting was good.
Yeah.
I, I, I think, I think we can waive that for a while.
Yeah, it could really have to be for the ones that are around it.
Yeah, there's no proposed developments in all of this.
As a result of this.
Right.
If there was proposed development, that'd be different.
Right, if he wants to come in on a future date and say, I'm going to put four houses back there on lot number one, then we have to know where those.
Yes.
Systems are.
Right.
But, for this, I think we can waive it.
Yeah, I would, I could, I would say, yeah. I don't think we need to make it any harder.
Yeah, I didn't. And then, you know, like I said, with a title report, uh, there really is no reason for it. Um, like I said, I went back to.
Well, we've waived, we've waived that many times. That's because, because, because whatever title problems, the easement problems are, are going to be the homeowners.
Headache.
It's going to be their headache, Dan.
Well, and again, it's more important. Well, and again, it's more important if you're. Creating these subdivisions where you're heading up lots and you could be putting an easement on someone's brand new lot.
Right.
Unknowingly.
Could be us. Our line.
Check the tax map for easements.
Yeah, yeah, I I checked the deed, going back.
Yeah.
Both uh, both uh, forth and calls, both all the families thereof.
Those old deeds are gonna be, they're gonna be written in little paragraphs.
Um. So the one thing was about, uh, one question you had was about showing the entire property. Honestly, you you probably, you can't plot the deed. Uh, because there, there actually, there's one part parcel that's just a bound. You would have to go out and actually physically find everything.
Isn't you?
I didn't have. There's more up here and there's more there.
Okay. Well, then I think you should ask for a waiver on that as well. I didn't, I didn't know how big it was.
Yeah. Well, this piece alone is a hundred and ninety-five acres.
Okay, well, I would think you should make a formal request for a waiver on it.
Okay, well, okay. Okay, those are the only ones I really had a.
So get your formal requests, get those written up and get those to me.
Yeah.
That I can incorporate those in my comment letters so we take care of everything.
Much more streamlined for us rather than.
Yeah, I apologize, I apologize because I, I actually uh, had, had, had those waiver requests typed up.
Yeah, no, no, it's true. What we'll do is, we will, we'll put it on for the August. We'll put it on the August one. You still have, you still have time.
Yep.
Did your deadline not till September tenth anyway? And it can still get with in front of the supervisors uh, in one of their August meetings. Let's do it that way.
Uh, I get it. Alright, Brian, thank you. Rocco's Collision, that must be you guys.
How you doing?
Laurie's gonna do all the work, I just.
He is, yeah.
Just a pretty face.
They're, they're sure.
If anybody believes that, you're in trouble.
Yeah, we go to the same tier.
You, you wanna?
No, I'm not, I'm fine. I'm just gonna do a little tiny bit of a.
No problem.
My name is Phil Hopkins. Um. I, I do work with Rocco's. Here with a smart associate, Lori Folio. The Riley Associates. Uh, and really my, I just like to make some general comments about. That you all probably recognize relative to Rocco's. Rocco's is essentially two buildings.
Yeah.
At the intersection of two, Milford Road and Frank Fidel. And. What Rocco's is really proposing to do is to put a building that connects the two buildings that are there. The, in the center, the center building will be purely a warehouse where he will. Receive parts for the vehicles he's repairing and send them out either side of the warehouse. To the section working on the vehicles. There is essentially less parking required. John has done a super thorough review. Took me down there to read it, because it was so comprehensive, that's the right word, John.
We try to do comprehensive. That's why I make him read it to me.
But what's, what is interesting about what we're doing is we have no additional. Runoff due to any paving. This building goes on an area that's already paved.
Yeah, it's already covered.
Already covered. Nothing happens in the front of the building. The other thing we're doing is we're adding some aesthetics. To the buildings, to in the terms of. The owner of Rocco's. Hookenalized it. And the look with the logs and things. I probably shouldn't tell you this, but I think what he sort of liked was what went on up at Harley David's. In Pansfield, so. If you think in terms of a new warehouse building, making a nice looking frontage. Along Milford Road, that's what's being proposed here. And I will let my good friend Lori tell you what really happened.
Hi, my name is Lori Folio, Riley Associates. Um, so if I gave you the printout with the aerial and the photos, just so you have more of the. More familiar, I know you're familiar with property, but just so, you know, I want to see a little more. The area that is between these two buildings is already existing. Impervious parking area and that's where the disturbance is going to be and that's where the uh, proposed addition's going to be. Uh, the other two photos for the entrances are for the existing established entrances along. Route two oh nine where we're not proposing any changes at all on that area either. And then down below, we have the, the architectural drawings so that you can have an image of what the building will look like. After completion and the difference from what is there now to what will, what it will look like. After it's finished. So we did receive our letter from John and we do have a few. Worth addressing his comments and do have a few waivers that we are requesting. And some of them, I don't know if you want me to go through all of them at this point, um, some of them are more important than others because if we can't get a waiver, then. We're not sure that the client's gonna wanna continue with the project because they're, you know. So do you want me to go over additional information about the project or do you want me to go over the waivers?
Let's hang on one second, yeah. Alright, so John, this is yours from June twenty-fourth, right?
Yes.
Alright. So, and obviously, and, and Riley Associates has, has your letter, right?
Right.
Alright. John, what is, what is your big, are there, is there anything big? I mean, are there any big issues?
No, actually I had a discussion um, with the engineers prior to this meeting about some of these waivers. I don't think there's uh, anything too big, um. You know, we have the usual requirements for location maps and. Uh, showing the overall, what's the impact within a thousand feet, uh. I think they want some relief from that. I don't, I don't have a problem with that because. The entire area is built up. We all know what's there. What they're proposing to do is. From what Bill has just said, alls they're doing is connecting two buildings, so it's not like they're creating something brand new from. On a vacant piece of ground, so a lot of these waivers, I think are okay, um. And let's see sidewalks one, you might wanna offer an opinion on that. Uh, street trees are another, you might wanna offer an opinion on that. And um, they have a storm drainage pipe that's going, it's actually going underneath the proposed building. Typically, they're supposed to be eighteen inches, they're proposing twelve inches, they've got limited ability. To put in a bigger pipe just because it's so flat. Um, my position on that is, and I said this to them when we had our discussion, you know, it's. Twelve inch pipes can be problematic, but it's gonna be your problem, not the township's problem.
Correct.
So you wanna do it, I'm not gonna object. Uh.
There's something between twelve and eighteen they give you? Is there a fourteen or fifteen?
There's a fifteen, but they said they would look into it, but I don't, I don't have.
But still, it's this. Uh, here's my, here's my thing, John. I can, I can, I'm not speaking for anybody, anybody other than me. Is your existing buildings? It's an existing, it's existing parking area. To be honest with you, I don't know why we just don't issue them with the impairment, tell them we haven't had it. I'm very, and I'm very serious because it's, because it's, because it is simply there and really.
The only reason you don't is because you're expanding your commercial development and the MPC says that's a land development stuff.
Okay.
And because they're connecting the buildings, if they would have kept it separate, it would have been an accessory.
Perhaps, yes.
Well, then you end up with a slightly different problem of an accessory use problem, may or may not.
But I think you oughta, I really.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna create, I don't wanna create hypothetical problems, just to slay them.
I, I, I think you're gonna be comfortable with most of their requests.
Yeah.
I think you oughta give them some direction on sidewalks and street trees.
Okay, I think on sidewalks, you probably heard us because you've been sitting, because you've been sitting there.
We have, yeah.
Is that something?
So that is a waiver that we are asking for, um. I did provide these photos along the entrance because sorry, they establish, you know, buffer between the road. And the parking is there, we're not touching anything out in that area if you, so. This is, this is the road.
Is that two oh nine?
This is two oh nine, this is um Franklin Hill Road. The dark, this is our area of construction. This is the, the building that's being constructed. They're putting in some planting beds in the front. Um, the garage or the ramp is going here, what have they back one for that as well. This is only building what we use for storage of parks.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then the pipe, again, we're, we are looking at the pipe after reading John's comments. And we're trying to see if we're able to take, how the architect. Do something different with the gutter so then they discharge into the back and not the front. Because the reason we have to have the pipe, pipe under the building is because the roof gutters drink here, which then go into that inlet. Which then it goes back here, because we don't wanna have to, this drains here now, we don't wanna have to regrade any of the parking lot.
Right.
Or have to, I don't know, do calculations on that basis, that's already there and established.
Sure, that I, that I, that I completely, I completely get it.
So we, we are trying to see what we can do to, if there's any way that we can change that, I'm not sure we can.
Okay.
Um, but we are working on that. And then the other item that we're gonna do is we're gonna take this dis- discharge point. And move it in a little bit more, um, so that we're not opposed to this property line as well.
Perfect.
So that's why we, we left a waiver for anything, not anything. But for the requirements for a sidewalk and street trees because it's already established and we're not doing any disturbance or any changes in that area.
Okay, so I think you heard us say that, that we are more, much more receptive when you're. Talking about at least making easement provision, just like we did with the sewer authority or with any of the, and with any of the other ones. You know, that, that we have done. I don't think that will cause you any problems. I would assume most of. That east, that most of the easement area would probably be within the, whatever that, those little grass.
Right.
Those little grass strips are there for your entrances anyway.
Sure, I mean that.
And I think that that would be something, you know, again, I, I could see that.
But what are, what are you asking? They think it's not worth saving?
Yeah, to like, yeah, you, basically you would, you would, you would uh, record easement across, you would make a rec, uh. A recorded easement, I would say the, you know, ten foot strips along the, whatever they are, it's like more, more sir.
Two oh nine.
They're getting along two oh nine and Franklin Hill Road, wherever those, on those two ones that. Um. An easement will be recorded for uh, for future uh, pedestrian or bicycle travel, something like that. And that would, I think, just in case they did turn into something trail like, to get down, because now you're starting to get down Franklin Hill Road. Towards this, towards, towards this park system, towards what the sewer authority. Uh, piece might ultimately, I'm, I'm thinking thirty years out.
But yeah, yeah.
You know, that, that, that's sort of what I'm thinking is because I could see that corner. Having additional development and wanting to have some walking ability, you know, through that and at least that it's in there.
Right.
As an easement, if that's the direction the township wants to go down the roads. That's what I would suggest.
Yeah.
I, I made that note ages ago when you brought up the, with the sewer authority project.
Yeah, but I think that, and I, I think that's an easy and frankly, a cost-free way of them. Being able to do it and I think that's a, a way to keep the options open for, for the township.
Yeah, and there's already a huge over there.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, there's, there's already space there, being with the worst.
Right.
Uh, I think that would be something that we would definitely, if you ask your waiver for that as an easement instead of a complete waiver.
Definitely.
When we come back in August, which I think this will come back.
Right, yes, yes, we, yes, we anticipate that.
And some trees.
Now, the tree thing, let's talk about the tree thing.
You need trees.
Yes, I like trees.
So.
Yeah.
There are, there are some trees.
There are some, right.
Um, so then think, along two and I believe in John Vlade, he said three additional trees would be needed and on Franklin Hill. And there's. That I don't know, I, I forget what it was, but there is landscaping on Franklin Hill Road, so there is landscaping here. Like some brasses and there's a nice planting bed here and.
Yeah.
Um, the, the property is well maintained, there's a big pine tree here, so that, so. Um, along here, I'm not sure if you wanna add the trees and then here. If you really want the street trees, we can add them, but there is exist.
Yes, and that's not the main reason that I think we would want to trees, at least from my standpoint. From my standpoint is those, adding some additional trees will also cut down on what is. A significant light pollution problem from yours, as well as the one across the street. I mean, there's, there is, there's like, there's a terrible light pollution glare problem there. And I think at least the requirement of the addition of some additional trees might help cut some of that down. That's, that's, that's not on this, but that's something just because if we drive down there now in twenty minutes, you'll see what it looks like.
So are you, so the.
I would.
That are there, there are more, more metal trees?
Yeah.
Is that something that you would be receptive to or do you want shade trees?
To be.
Because there's power lines, the, the power lines go right for there.
Dwarf trees? A dwarf tree.
A dwarf tree? So.
Like a, like a, uh, red maple, those red maples.
That's there.
Dwarf maple.
So a red maple wouldn't um, necessarily provide what you're looking like, if you're, they're talking like Japanese, Japanese maple?
It'll, it'll provide a lot of aesthetics.
Okay, right. So do you?
If that. I'm not asking the screen or volume line. I'm asking whatever, whatever trees that get added will only be a benefit. That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay. So you're not gonna give a waiver for the street trees?
No. I'm not, I can't speak for the other members of the panel here, but I would say no.
We're just. Feeling you water here, seeing where we've.
Eastside sidewalk is doable, the trees, they have, they have.
Yeah, it's hard for us to waive too.
It is.
And how about the landscaping buffer between. Non-residential parking area, so. There's parking here, but now this is, there's no more parking here. Um, it's over here on the side.
Well, it's existing though.
It is exist, what is exist.
Is that parking, the parking that you dropped, is that what's existing there now?
There's a park over there, right?
Can they park it there?
Park here, yes, well, they know, well, here there's existing parking, but that's going to be removed for this project. Because this is gonna be a building front and it's gonna be garage floor, so there's not going to be any more parking here. And then there's going to be parking there, which is existing and there, all the parking on here is already existing, we're removing some of it.
Okay.
So the, the ordinance says that we need to provide within a hundred feet of. The building and these have continuous low hedge around the outside perimeter. So we're asking for a waiver for that. Because there's already a launch, the, the landscaping's already established there and. We're not proposing anything different than what's already existed.
What are you saying, you need to reply? I, how can you say that in a different way? I don't understand. We would have been minutes. You don't. No, just rephrase what you said about.
We're asking for a waiver for the, the, the hedge. Is that, in the front along the road?
Right, hey, if you would, on this, show me where it is that you're talking about here, just on the, on the actual, just if you would. So we were, if you were to.
Wait, wait, you're saying.
See, this is it, right, so where are we, where are you saying that you think we, you need to put the load in during our audit?
Right here. Well, the department's marketing it up.
Oh, you're in front of these, in, in these existing?
Yeah.
In the existing islands?
Yes.
I see. Under them these pieces.
Correct.
Alright.
Right, thank you. No, it's, alright, thank you for the clarification.
This one.
No, I think, thank you for the clarification, this one.
What are your thoughts on that? Yeah, in, in reality, yeah, here, what she was saying is this. She's talking about these pieces of green, basically. In, in here, this stuff.
But we just discussed the increase there.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, because your ordinance requires street trees and a hedge along parking. So there is parking here, so essentially we would have to have a hedge on here. On, on that side and this side.
On Franklin Hill.
And then right here, because there's parking there, this parking's being removed. And I don't know if it like.
Talking about a hedge on Franklin Hill Road.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and.
Cause it's nothing there, it's all.
Right, this little strip here, there is a little fence right there.
Yeah, it's very unattractive on that, on that spot right there. Yeah, that's true, along the Franklin Hill side, I know, they, cause they store the cars they work on, I understand all that.
I think if we put some ornamental trees, I think that would, I think requiring landscaping, for sure, but we have to be more specific. And there is landscaping there now. So there is landscaping here, it's just not a solid hedge, hedge row.
Right, yeah, it's very unattractive on that side of, that's Franklin Hill Road, yeah. Across, it's across the street from Social Security Office. So. You have an alternative?
Then a hedge row. I think it would look nice if you just had lawn and trees, so then you can put. In this existing bed here, be the two ornamental trees and then up here, there's a, there's a bed here and there's a bed here and they are well maintained. So they, they look nice, um, then if you put two trees here in that lawn area, that would. Help with, that would, you know, count for the street trees.
So you, can you put, uh, five trees on that si, on that street?
I don't think there's enough room for a hedge row right now, if you look at that property.
The trees are, the trees will look, would look.
And we need to, like, you can do a multi-stem tree, so that it, it's up, it, like, it goes up and out a little bit to cover a little more. Area.
There's a Bradford pear.
Yeah. They're not multi-stem.
And I got like five hundred pears on a tree right now.
This requires some sort of landscaping, but it's just sort of tricky because there's.
It is tricky.
There's literally no room, the cars are parked over there, they're parked yard.
Right, but this is, but this is an opportunity to make it look a bit better, this is a, this is a bet, I don't. I don't wanna make it onerous, but I don't wanna miss the chance that. It can be improved from what I was looking at, now, you know what I mean, that, that, I don't wanna.
You wanna improve on one side of the street though?
No.
You know, people always look to the right where they're going, or whatever.
A lot of people go through it there now, years ago, it was. It was very, very little traffic down, you had a lot of people. They cut through there to get.
How about I propose something that's down the good and you can say whether you like it, even if it's not like what your ordinance says, a hedge row. Cause I don't think hedge row necessarily owns those by best.
I think that would be true.
I think that'd be a good idea, with pictures similar to this, cause this is really nice.
I think that would be terrific, actually, yes, I would love to, it, cause we're gonna come back in August, we're gonna come back in August, anything. I think we're also working towards the same goal.
Right, we want it to look good.
We, we want.
The building's gonna be beautiful, so we wanna do a tree that's not gonna block the building, that's gonna accent it.
I have a question, are the existing other businesses staying in here?
No, no, that, that.
They're all gone?
Yes.
Yeah, the strip mall.
So this. This strip mall is going to be like, that's what I thought. No, 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 that's gonna be, that's, that's, so then, then we.
We made an opportunity.
Visualize this, and that's.
They're on. You, you all look for a level when that used to be the stumbling.
Says on space, but it's.
And the stagecoach is, and it's a stagecoach down.
There's all the other?
Yes.
No, no, it's gonna be the. Yeah, I think it's, I think that's just on the, the architect put in there.
I haven't heard that in a long time.
To show that they have a assignment.
So it's gonna be all rock.
It's laid out a little bit. He knows that, he doesn't show, but he knows that. For me? No, it's all wrong.
I just wanted to confirm that, yeah, so I'm telling them, yes, it's all his, and then I'm like, wait, is it no?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so that's gonna look great, so we'll, we want. I understand you want some landscaping, so I can really make it so that it accents the building.
I think, yeah, I think you probably, I think you probably could, and give us something that.
Hedges, the hedges will make it look too institutional.
Yes, so.
Oh, yeah, that, okay.
That's a good description.
Yeah, right.
I mean, unfortunately, you're talking to a landscape architect.
Well, I didn't know that, that's good.
I think it's fortunate.
Yeah, really, she told us that fifty minutes ago, right? No, I think, no, I think that, I think that'd be good. When we come back.
You guys aren't giving me a hard time now that I'm landscaping up with that, I don't think John does.
Oh, it's okay. Have that yet begun to give a hard time?
So one of the, the major things that we need. Is for the road wiring. The, let's see which one is. Oh.
Yeah.
Twenty-two dash one zero zero eight. Point three, this is where a subdivision of Flotser contains an existing street. That applicant developed, which shall be required to improve said street to township standards and provide an additional ultimate right of way with. To conform to the standards set by the township. So. John.
I would that apply to you.
You're saying along Franklin Hill Road, we would need to widen it?
Well, that's what the ordinance said.
So we're asking, since we're not doing any changing of the entrances in or out.
Right.
The traffic is gonna actually be less than what it was planned for, since those are retail, like a retail strip mall there now, and it's just going to be. A garage, um, traffic will be less, so we're asking to have that requirement, do any changes to this road, wait.
Sidewalk or sidewalk, please.
I mean, the sidewalk easement is separate, that's just, that's the easement.
Yeah, the ordinance would suggest that they widen, but I'm not suggesting that they are to do that, I'm just telling you what the ordinance says.
Yeah, I couldn't see myself acquiring that, to be honest with you. I think that, I don't, I don't think that would be the intent of what it, we're, we're really looking at here.
It would be if they were tearing down Rockos and putting, I don't know.
Story, but to be honest with you, John, would it be the same, Franklin Hill Road's the same size no matter what?
Oh, you should have fifty foot right away, if you're gonna have a brand new big structure there, but. At this point.
Then you're moving your buildings around, I.
Right, right, in this case, I don't think it's necessary, yeah, I'm just telling you what the ordinance says, so you can say it's not necessary.
Yeah, I, I can't see that.
The long building is not changed.
I don't know. More than me, I'm saying other one are just items that are required on the plan, we're asking for some waivers for those. Um, the site context map. We're asking that we can use a four hundred foot scale instead of a. Two hundreds foot, split.
Is that okay, John, that is?
Um, and we're still gonna show within a thousand feet of the property, but it's just gonna be not as, as big.
Okay.
Um. And we're asking that we don't have to submit, and we'll have an ENS plan designed and provided. Except we're just not gonna, um, ask, we don't have to submit it to the County Conservation District. They don't require it, because we're under an acre, but your ordinance requires it, so we're not asking for a waiver.
Yeah, I don't see why you would need to do that, it's already there, it's already impervious, and it's, I couldn't imagine why we would do that, I don't recall it.
And then the other one is the site context map shall include the names and owners of properties. Within a thousand feet, so we're providing names and addresses for the adjoining properties, but not within a thousand.
Okay.
That was, we're just asking.
The adjoining ones, I could see.
A waiver for that, yes.
Cause you're not changing anything other than what you're already doing, you.
Right.
It's already there.
And then the, the last two are. Um, the existing resource and site analysis plan, we do have an existing features and demolition plan. We don't have the existing resources and site analysis plan. Um, we're showing all the, the major items within the area that we're, we're doing the work. Um, we're just asking for a waiver from that requirement. I can show you the existing.
Yeah.
There, again, the development is being over an existing impervious area.
Yeah.
So I don't think that's.
I, I don't see that being a problem, it's just.
Okay, well then, there's your, oh, there's. The wetland buffer. This is, so the wetlands, actually, this is, it's not right on this plan, we updated our new one, it actually goes. Something like that, a little closer to the building, is the wetland, well, from a wetland. It's a survey that was done, what was it done in?
Two thousand.
Oh, wow, yeah, so that's the, the, we're not gonna go and reveal any of the weapons, but that's, that's what we're showing, so we're using that. So now the building is within the buffer and the ordinance state that you're not allowed to build within the buffer. And we're gonna ask for relief to be able to build a building within the buffer, because it's already an existing impervious area.
Yeah, it's already there. It's already paid.
So.
You're just moving the impervious surface twenty feet up. That's all, in reality, that's all you're doing. You're just, you're just lifting it up.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't see there's a problem, I mean, it's already there.
So we're going to address all of.
Yeah.
John's comments, I've got most of them addressed.
Let me do this.
Um.
In my folder, Fred.
Is there anything else that you, that I missed anything other than that?
No, I think we're good.
And when do you need this file?
When you need a mark.
No, it's the changes.
Well, I asked when you need it, why would you need, you want to be?
I would get the next one.
So August, what, fourteenth, you said before?
Then I need two weeks to review it.
Alright.
So you've gotta get it to me within two weeks and. Two weeks of the office meeting.
Yeah, so we, so we have it with your, with the, with the waiver request, so I mean, remember that we put it all, so by the way. I, I thank you for not having a, a one level strip mall building thing in front of it. Um, I'd someone who wanted some of those things in our, in our, uh. Uh, economic development ordinance, I, I like that you put it in there anyway. I wanted some of that aesthetics to make it look better, I appreciate it.
It's gonna be a very nice product.
I appreciate it, yeah, you know.
Well, thank you very much, and there are changes to you and you got the next one. You might have Chris for next one, huh?
No, I'd say you, you did, you did alright. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, all right, anything else?
I have two, Mr. Tare, and this really goes again to.
Thank you.
Manager.
Hey, once again, Russ will give you next.
Uh, the, uh, the water deck wellness, you know, I don't see it on the plan, and I think there's time running, if I'm not mistaken. And also the Verizon cell tower, I think there's time running, and I don't see it, so I'm not, I wanna make sure we're not.
I think, no, Verizon cell tower's done, because that was.
Uh, so.
Done that thorough work, that's, we're not, we don't, we don't have.
Their land development plan, though, they filed, that's still.
Oh, okay.
That just came in, not that long ago.
The, the thing that is sitting on the desk in front of you right now, Verizon one four, uh, two four one seven. That was just submitted to town, yeah.
So we're okay then, even though they gave an extension of seven twenty-two?
So, yeah, that one, I haven't gotten another extension for him yet, but I've reached out to him, say, hey, need this again.
All right, so another, but a different plan.
Yes, yes, the, the Verizon wireless slash magic cauldron is the project over on F four pro.
So what's this one?
Um, the town just received the follow-up conditional use application with his zoning hearing board variance request. That was granted, um, back on their two third.
Where is it?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, two four one seven gap, you drive.
Oh, that's the one that still scores far one, okay.
Yeah, so I wasn't really worried about that one, because again, that just came in, I was more concerned about the other one.
Accessory building, land development plan, um, also has the deadline of July twenty-third, also on my radar. Um, and that's the one that at the last planning commission, you recommended to move forward if it was one thing. Um, or not, if it was another, so that will be landing on the board of supervisors.
And water deck wellness, we're okay with that?
Yes, I will make sure that I have an extension, where they'll be on for the Nile at the twenty-second meeting.
Maybe they'll have an answer as to what they're actually.
There you go, that's always our captain.
Always.
On top of everything.
Russ, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
I don't want under public comment or just a follow-up.
Yeah, go ahead.
On our mission, if you don't mind, this one, one or two minutes.
Sure.
Uh, quick conversation with the handover engineering on reducing the parking spaces, uh, from fourteen, uh, three parking spaces. Most of the parking is, uh, the, almost the entire site is a disturbed site. Because of how it was regraded in the past, where the driveway was, where the prior parking lots were. Where there were chicken coops, other types of coops on the property, so the, almost the entire property has been disturbed. Except the front yard, where we're gonna use it as a detention basin, so we don't wanna move the parking lot any closer than that. My point is, is the stormwater report manual, whatever it is that Hanover puts together, is part of the requirement. It's like a hundred and thirty page document, the entire document would have to be redone to reduce the parking spaces, so. Our position is, so John understands that when he reviews this, everything, we're gonna ask for the waiver in the outer buffer of the, the wetland area. That area is already disturbed.
Okay.
Uh, so we're, you know, the costing.
Let me ask you a question, uh, are you, you wanna build fourteen spaces, or are you just concerned about the cost of the storm?
I'm concerned of redoing the entire hundred and thirty page document for the stormwater, because of reducing the number of parking spaces.
I don't think that's necessary, if you, if you do something. If you buy a bucket that holds a hundred gallons and you only put ninety gallons in it, well, that's fine, you don't have to buy them a bucket.
Well, I guess what I'm asking for is, do we need to ask for a waiver to not have to resubmit new calculations for the stormwater to reduce three parking spaces?
No. You don't.
Okay.
Stormwater calculations are in fact correct, I mean.
Well, you're gonna be reviewing what's there.
Right, but you don't have to do them over because you're taking some impervious surface out.
No, 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 that would be wasteful, but yeah.
Technically, I'm asking that question.
Now it's a fair question.
We're trying to follow, you know, we're trying to follow, you know, the procedure appropriately, trying to answer the question appropriately. Uh, another comment, um, uh, when, when Hanover submitted the drawings on June twentieth. Uh, they did ask for how many hard copies were needed, uh, and I know it was over weekend, but that was, you know, late afternoon on Friday. But it was in the evening on June twenty-fourth, when they got a response that they wanted five copies, so the next day or right after that is when the copies were. Hand delivered with a hard copy. So, yeah, that's a five or six day period, and I'm a little confused on the start date of reviewing drawings, I, I don't. Think the engineer waits for the hard copies to come to their office, I think they can start reviewing the electronic copies, just making a comment. That was four to five days before we got a response on how many hard copies you wanted, so the start date is when you get the hard copies. Okay, you know, uh, we should have insisted ahead of time how many hard copies you want, so, uh, I did want to mention that. The other thing I wanna mention, my opinion, okay, what we're doing is reconstructing driveway. Building a small parking lot, putting a one hundred square foot addition on an existing building, and like I said, the entire site. Has had some type of disturbance. I really believe the planning commission, the supervisor, whoever it would be. Should seriously consider a minor land development ordinance. Uh, play, uh, minor land development plan ordinance, I've looked at other municipalities, they have them, I don't know exactly what's eliminated. But we are trying to comply with everything that's in the land development ordinance, and I don't consider this project a big project. Uh, we're doing it by what the ordinance is. Uh, we're doing it by what the ordinance is saying, but I just think it should be some discussions as, you know, on smaller projects, and the reason I say that. To your question about rep fees, now I agree with it, I understand it, we're willing to help with recreation facilities of some type. It's my understanding that there are several projects in the township in commercial properties. Where the land development plan has been waived, so there is no rep fee from those projects. Um, that's my opinion, you know, and.
I can get you back on this, um, our new zoning officer has been, you know, reviewing our codes, and this is actually something that he has mentioned, as might be a good idea. Um, he has suggested that if you're doing less than a thousand feet of something, you might be able to go through minor land development. Um, to not require the full layout, um, Russ is correct that there are other townships that do it, uh, I believe when I was up at Toby Hannah, they had, uh, something similar to this. Um, so it's in the back of the pipeline, um, you will eventually, potentially see this, because this is something our zoning officer had recommended.
Understandable. I appreciate the township looking into that, because it's, it's a considerable cost to the Sora Authority, oh, to get to where we are. Uh, and we're doing it, we're not objecting to it, but there's also on some other small businesses around our community. It, it's, it's a considerable expense for them to go through the entire, uh, process that we've gone through. This is what we've gone through, less to reports that are a hundred pages long. So it's a lot, or in my opinion, a relatively small project in comparison to some other large projects. I think we could, you just wanted to make that comment, and I appreciate the township just thinking of that, it's, I think it's, it's understandable. For the community, uh, thank you, appreciate your.
All right, Russ.
Thank you.
You have a good night.
Thank you.
I'd like to motion adjourned.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tell who?
It's such a, it was such a place.
Yeah, did, were you here just for the, uh, just for the chief theater tonight, Tim, is that it?
Yeah, I had nothing else to do.